Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Space from UU Roll Call please.
Yes. Mrs. Bytens present, Mr. Kurtz.
Present.
Mr. Martino. Mr. Edeseno. Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Rattke.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Prudowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here. Thank you. Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed on the inside of the packet. Basically, everyone should have signed in at the back. If you haven't, please do so. When you approach the podium to make a presentation, you will also be asked to sign in there. When you begin your presentation, that's when your time will be started. All right, for announcements, there is an agenda edit for the committee of the whole. Under Finance, please add Kate Letter B, approve a 10% increase in cafeteria lunch prices for the 2016-2017 school year for the previously approved FMC. All right, there will also be an executive session following the committee of the whole to discuss personality negotiations. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Okay, summer's coming to an end. We, for a quick update, let's see everyone. Okay. Just so you all know, we shot two movies over at the high school. We did one movie using our students as extras, and over the weekend, the corpse group is shooting a reality show. So that'll be on, I think it's A&E or AMC or Lifetime. It's produced by The Rock, so you'll get to see Daniel Boone schools in two locations this year. GCA is onsite now, working indoors and outdoors, cleaning up the facilities. Band camp has begun. I was out there today, and it's pretty hot. The fall sports kickoff is Wednesday at 5:30 at the high school, so if you want to come out, support the fall sports. There's two staffing moves. Right now, it's Ted Iselman is going to be temporarily vice principal over at the high school, and Mary Beth Kiesel will become the interim principal over at Birdsboro for the next school year. Right, that's all I have right now. Looking forward to seeing everyone come back.
Any board questions? Any public comment, the superintendent's report? Seeing none, committees. Starting off with Finance, Mr. Rattke.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We did meet last week on Thursday, so a few things going into here, let's see. First, we did have a report from our nutrition group. They recapped last year's numbers for us. I think that we all know that they did not give their target for meals, although I guess you could say that certainly got me included. I think the budget numbers were a little overextended to give them, but they did start to make some progress pretty good at the end of the year with getting the bill counts up, as far as changing some items, trying to do techniques in sales and personalizing. I don't think to also continue that going into next year, so we're looking to try and again use the new sales there, come through different items. We also had a discussion on potential, we've had the past, about pulling out the high school from the national federal nutrition guidelines. They gave us a synopsis of what the potential costs would be on that and what the sales would have to be to make up for the free lunch money that we do receive right now. So I think this is definitely going to have to be all in a discussion. I'm not sure I'm in complete agreement with some of the numbers we gave, so it's something that we definitely need to look more into. I know Mr. President Harris is also looking into that, some of the districts that are half off the program, so more to come with that. We did have a discussion also on our capital projects fund, so we've definitely agreed going forward, and Mr. Small's working on the five-year plan update, putting in that $500,000 minimum year number for capital improvements around the district. We're looking at a, starting to discuss, Mrs. Bytens had requested that we look at capital tax analysis. So we started that process with distribution tax, the business office will be looking at exactly how much it actually costs us to actually collect this tax, also some of the other details of the actual process itself. If we were to, for example, decide to eliminate that tax, would we still need to collect that from the townships, or the townships can take it all themselves? So we'll call that all those details and hopefully come as a recommendation, obviously just be part of the next year's budget, so we have a while on that, but I'll leave it at that for now, so we could have a recommendation for that. We also had a presentation by Brian Muller, Brian Muller of the Campbellstown. As I think the board knows, we did contact them for a bid on legal services, so we also have a renewal bid from Fox Rosschild. You know, we did have a breakdown of the business office as far as the hours that were billable last year to us. There is, one of the differences, I guess, in terms of retainer fee that Fox Rosschild does charge us, which in the scheme of things is frankly minimal compared to the other hourly costs that are associated with all the daily items that need to take care of the district. But we can discuss this in more detail, but we do have some work and they've considered us to continue using Fox Rosschild services. We have that extension through, is that the total?
In the September past.
So we're going to make a decision on that, whether we're going to proceed to move to Campbellstown or stay with Fox Rosschild. You know, and there are some intricacies, and we do have some ongoing support with negotiations. There's a couple ways we can handle that. If we did decide to switch, we could certainly maintain the old solicitor until we have the negotiations, or we could transfer that over to a new one, so there are some considerations there. But yeah, everything can be worked out if we decide to switch. You know, I'm not sure frankly that there's necessarily a cost statement, although Mr. Muller did suggest that his firm, some districts do not have participation at four meetings. If that's the choice of the board, some boards don't want the solicitor there, so obviously they save hours by not having that person activated. And he said, well, what would occur would be, you know, that any questions that the solicitor would answer would be jotted down and do the communication with the administration the next day, then we get those taken care of. So anyway, we need to make a decision on that. Mr. Small also updated our 2016-17 state funding, which is small, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the overall was a positive $360,000 to the district with increases to special aid, our standard funding, as well as an increase in our set values for property that came out of the county. All right, okay. I think that was, I think that leaves everything left for something, let's see here. Yeah, that was, that was, what happened? Any comments?
I just have a comment to add about the per capita tax, that one of the duties of the assistant business manager that I've noticed through my three years on the board is that he's always bringing us those exoneration. It seems like he's spending a lot of time, and I think that's the per capita tax, so it just seems like a time-consuming activity, and I believe Spring Ford has already, has just recently done, as if we're going to continue to investigate that option, I appreciate it, and just a little bit of insight on that. Thank you.
I think, you know, what we're concerned about, what, you know, with the procedures, we don't want to negatively affect the municipalities, so we want to understand how that, all that works.
And again, maybe Spring Ford would be a good resource on that, they just recently went through that change, transition.
And your next committee meeting is?
Well, as of right now, we'll keep with the first Thursday of the month, I've seen it work pretty good with those folks. They changed from my committee that they cannot commit that date, so we'll keep with the next first Thursday, September.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rattke. Curriculum instruction, we had a meeting today. Mr. Kurtz, you want to summarize?
Yeah, could I actually hand it over to Mrs. Bytens? She chaired in my absence.
Sure, I'd be glad to. We talked about L Business, about the action by the administration that they're taking recently to weigh in on some of the changes that are coming out of the schools because of the new regulations on the new child with behind, which is known as ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. Especially, as you may know, it's being kind of translated, the federal was passed, but now it's being translated by the states, and there was a big study done by the study group. PASPA had input, PDE's recommendations are now formulated, and it's a grassroots movement, and our administration also had weighed in through a survey and through a letter they sent into the administration. And they're optimistic about some of the things, the recommendations that PDE has made regarding AE, which will be the implementation, but Senate only, which is, will be the implementation of ESSA here in Pennsylvania. So we're hopeful because we're seeing some of the emphasis taken away from high-stakes testing. Kestons will still be part of, if PDE gets their way, and it's not for anybody to get excited about, we've been cautioned, but the things, it's good talk going on because there could be other forms of qualifications for retirement, for graduation other than Keston, for instance, the NOFTI, which is a trade, a school-accepted test, so everybody wouldn't have to take and be proficient at biology, algebra, and math to graduate college. And there's also, there's major interest in D, in elimination of the PBA, Project Base Assessment, where everybody was drained about how, would the kids who failed the Kestons too many times were to get thrown into this eight-to, eight-hour to 55-hour project where they had to complete each module the long way, and the resources, the drain that would have been on the schools is just, you know, incalculable. So it looks like there's a lot of good things happening as far as, never be perfect, there will always be standards that will have to be met beyond the local level, which is ideally what we would, we would like to have control of. So we discussed that, we discussed the progress of the Coral Reef Project, which is one of our shiny lumens. We're optimistic that we'll actually have fish in the tank by the end of the year, so it's being built, and the materials have to all acclimate, and it's going to be a step-by-step process, but it's well underway. The Chinese class enrollment was overwhelming at the middle school, the class was, 20 student seats were filled within 24 hours of the message being sent out widespread across the district, and I applaud the way it was handled, everybody had a shot at it, and was sort of pre-qualified based on how their reading scores were, and they've got a waiting list for any cancellations. And beyond that, we're looking to create a vision now, a long-term vision, for what we want out of our language program, and talking about, you know, out with the old and with the new, wherever we want to be in five years, assuming we, you know, we get some budget freedom in the next few years to reinvest in our language programs. And one big thing they're going to be doing is creating, is conducting a survey with parents and students to see, well, what other classes? Chinese was overwhelming. What else, what's been in the manner for out there? So I'm real excited about that, and I really applaud the administration for bringing that to us all the way through our presentation. I'm looking forward to hearing how the students are going with it. It's actually an instructor from China who's a rover, it's called, they put her, give her up on the screen, actually it is a her this year, right? And then there's a kind of a facilitator in the class that helps with the management, and the kids actually engage with the two online through the PCIU. It's online, they all got their own computers, and they'll all be connected to her, and she will be out there with the house, too, to actually be in that face-to-face. So ours is only one class that she's delivering, she has probably, you know, an eight, six to eight class scheduled throughout the district, but that, you know, fifth period or whatever, her fifth period will be our middle school Chinese class. So, and then we also talked about advancing financial literacy through the district in some way, so that all the kids graduating from Boone have had some exposure to balancing checkbooks, and, you know, responsibilities of overdrafting your checkbook and how to use a Mac, and, you know, just some financial wisdom we want to impart. And all the students, every Boone student, regardless of their level in math, and whether they take it or not. So we're looking forward to hearing that plan unfold over the next few months. Okay? I think that's the bulk of it. Any questions? Any thinking, anyone wants to plug in there?
Yeah, we also talked about the Ole Wees School League program.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Okay, the Ole Wees School League program is a gold standard for anti-bullying. Our middle school poses that we go forward with it, it's a sound, research-based program. It's building upon what we've done in the past. The strength of the program itself is, it not only involves training of teachers, teachers working with kids on anti-bullying, counselors working with kids on anti-bullying, also brings parents involved with it, and community members involved with the anti-bullying program. It's very comprehensive, it's used throughout the country. In terms of research, it broadly has the most research in terms of effectiveness out of any middle school anti-bullying program that's out there. Ole Wees is the national expert on it, and so we were talking about that.
Thank you, I'm so sorry I forgot that.
No problem.
It's been budgeted, we got it in pretty well, it looks like a very, the administration's very excited about it.
The last piece we talked about was the high school classes that were a few.
And let me just finish on that, though, because that might even, we have a grant in process, and we pay for that, even though it's been budgeted, right?
Yes. I wrote a grant this summer, I don't know if I got it yet, but the grant itself will warrant a payment, and if I get it, if not, I did budget for this for a program for middle level.
And this will integrate bullying throughout all levels of the middle school, curricula, assemblies. And yes, we did approve the six AP classes that have under 10 students. The curriculum committee is recommending that we accept the fact that there are six. And would you like to explain that a little bit better, Mr. Hugland, what happened and why?
Yeah, this is going to happen every year. First, let me give you a little bit of history, if you go back two years, remember, we were running about 30-some classes that were under 10. We have now, due to some very good scheduling, the high schools now have been narrowed down to five or six, they have it in front of you there. When you take a look at that, the reason why that happens is this, when the high school does the preliminary scheduling, they do a tally, and they see what the kids want. All those courses that are on there, the doors are over 10, but when they actually do the schedule, the scheduling involves many what we call salutants, or individual classes that only run one period, and what it comes down to is, the student wanted a class, and they had to make a choice, either this class or this class, and because they chose the other class, okay, then it ends up bringing the enrollment down below 10. So that's why, that's going to happen every single year at Daniel Boone. Obviously, AP courses are very important. If it's our goal as a school district to get our kids into the most rigorous colleges, when you talk about Penn, Dartmouth, Pabst, Swatford, we need to provide them with the most rigorous opportunities possible. These AP courses, along with other ones that we've increased over the years to everyone's credit, provide those kids with our most rigorous curriculum. So that's why the administration does recommend going forward with that, even though they some have nine, most of them have nine, and I think one had six, but basically, that's what you have in front of you there.
And the committee did agree, the committee did agree and was confident with the process that was followed to minimize the number of under-10 classes, so we appreciate the administration's work on getting the number of under-10s from 35 or 40 to six this year, and they're all AP, so that's about my summary from CNN.
Is there a list? I know it's.
It is, you have an attachment coming up. I think you all have the attachment of the under-six, the under-10s coming with the committee as well.
Yeah, because that's on the.
The last column is the one you're looking at. You'll see they have 78, 598, real close to 10 anyway, and if you're looking at it, it's a bell curve. Looks very sound. And most of these teachers are teaching beyond their normal required six classes to facilitate this, so they're giving up their duty.
But again, this is something we're voting on later.
Right.
So if there's any questions now would be, it's a good time.
Okay, good. Any questions? Thank you.
And the next curriculum instruction meeting will be September 12th at 6 o'clock here at the administration.
Yes, I was just going to say that, thank you.
Okay. Now I lost my focus.
The facilities committee met this evening, and the, however, we did have a meeting on some of the primary access issues, like the wood, that we kind of started that one on August 17. The gym floor renovations have all been completed, after this Friday, they'll all be able to use. There were a few doors that they were, that we had approved, in June, when we approved some of the noise in the high school, we repaired with the new locks and hardware, there was a couple doors they were unable to, to replace the hardware, it was because either they had things that were missing, or there was tools, so Casey is working on getting quotes for what it costs to replace those doors, and then we have to decide if we need to do that or not, so that would come back to the board. We talked about the artificial turf usage, and the turf field will be needing to be replaced in probably three to five years, so we are starting to talk about the cost for that, and how we can potentially maybe get some revenue that, to help pay for that, whether it's renting out the stadium for other uses, whether it's looking at the groups that use that, and if they are outside uses, if we need to have some charge for that, but that is going to be a topic of discussion in the future, certainly. There is a water leak in the water line, like in the high school to the stadium, they think they have it narrowed down to right near the building, so they're going to be digging that up and trying to look and fix that in the next week or so. And then we also talked mainly about, we had a quite lengthy discussion as a GCA update as far as staffing, buildings, it does look like they are all pretty much staffed, they have approximately 36 employees right now, with four that are not currently working, they're waiting clearances, but once they have their clearances, they'll be able to also start, but they have approximately 17 of staff that were with us when they were staying with work for Daniel Boone, and they're currently working for GCA, and they hired some other ones. But we can tell, there's, and there's, I'm sure there's been a few pickups along the way, but so far, from what we can tell, it's working well, they're cleaning, they're doing what needs done, and everything should be ready for the start of school. We also talked about our equipment and tools and grounds equipment, and what we want to do with that. GCA has made some offers, or has made an offer to purchase some of the equip, all the equipment, pretty much all the equipment, so we did kind of take a look at those. What we were recommending is that the board authorizes staff to actually put the key pieces of, like cleaning equipment, that we think that Casey would think is worthwhile, as well as the grounds equipment, onto the municipal website, which is an online auction, it's no cost to the school district, buyer pays a percentage if they're the winning bidder, and you can put in a reserve, you don't have to accept the offers, we can see if we can get more than what GCA is willing to offer for some of the equipment, and if they do, then we can either, you know, we can sell to the highest bidder, or we could do what we want. But it makes sense to try to get the most that we can, so that was the committee's recommendation as far as that. As far as the trucks and those things, we aren't looking to unload all those this time, and we didn't get to go through, we ran out of time, so we didn't look to go through and really discuss the vehicles and the files and that kind of thing, so we're going to put that, carry that over to the next agenda, but, you know, I don't know if the board can authorize putting that stuff on the auction site tonight, and we can have the end of the auction the Friday until the next meeting, or we need to wait until the next meeting to authorize that.
I would say this is ever sooner than better.
I just don't know if we can do it. I have a question about that. I caught the tail end of that meeting, and I'm curious, what is this, where is this equipment right now? Is it being stored somewhere? Are the new contractors using the equipment, or they've been, they are using it? And is there some sort of lease arrangement for them? Or what's the understanding if something breaks while they're, I'm sorry?
It's still our equipment.
So why is it that they're getting used to our equipment? I think we've identified $52,000 worth of equipment here. What's up with that? I'm just wondering.
Well, I.
I'm sorry?
A used car, you want to kick the tires, make sure it works before you actually place a bid on it?
Also, because of the timing of the transition, July 1st, we didn't, we don't have time to declare it surplus, there was no board meeting, to get them up and running, we allowed them to use our equipment, and also.
So do you have a mind now, can we charge them a lease fee? $52,000 worth of equipment, 10% lease, you know, we get $5,000 a month from them, do you use all this equipment?
It also, it also took about, what, a month to come up with pricing, to get them out here, to look at our pricing.
I think it's great that we have that, absolutely.
And this is the first time we've put a real value to it, so now we're bringing to the board the first board meeting we have available to put something together and to have a discussion, when we haven't had any committee meetings or any board meetings, we put it together, they've been here since July 1st, to get them up and running, to get the buildings ready, you know, use the equipment, and the intent is really for them to purchase it, so that they.
Was there never an expectation on their part to have to bring their equipment?
I can't speak to what's in their mindset. I know that we had equipment, they came in with their staff and said we would purchase it. Lauren and the crew, the GCA crew, worked on pricing.
They have brought in considerable amount of new equipment of their own that they're using, so it's not like they're using all of our equipment. They did bring in.
The floor scrubbers, the waxers.
I feel what I'm uncomfortable rushing to sell it, to anybody accept them, and if we sell it to them, I think we should sell it with some sort of buyback in case this doesn't work out. I'd hate to see this all the way out to auction, and then in a year have to re-buy the stuff, but I think that we should be able to buy the stuff back at the same price they buy it for.
Well, actually, it would be worth less.
No, because we paid them a month's use of it for free, so.
No, I'm saying if we buy it back a year or two from them, it's actually worth less.
Appreciate it, we would want to appreciate it, exactly. And I'm just, however, this, I would like to contact them immediately and ask them for some sort of lease on this, some sort of payment on the use of this. Oh my gosh, I have to pay $150 a day to rent a digger from Till-Row. This is insane that they're using all of their equipment. Am I dealing with the other side? Free?
Well, they're not using everything, they're using a few pieces, and like Lauren said, they brought in a lot of their.
That's a good point.
Equipment that we didn't have to do the floors.
So it's a verbal understanding you have right now, will they fix when breaks? Or are we going to fix?
If they break it, they bought it. They've worked with us in a number of areas, so we don't have an adversarial relationship where we feel that we can't work with them through things.
They could turn adversarial real quick.
Well, they've done things that we've asked them to do that they may not have felt was in their best interest, but they've been working with us, and they've been a good partner so far. So over the last three, four weeks, they've done everything that we've asked them to do, that I can't, that I can think of.
And I think we also discussed that Casey had identified.
And I think we also discussed that Casey had identified a handful of, you know, more, we'll call it more expensive or, you know, higher-end items that we could probably sell at a fairly, substantially higher than what we're being offered. And the rest of it is, you know, he's assessed the offers and said 90% of it is good. It's like these five things, we think we should sell for much more and we should bid them. So I think, in my mind anyway, in addition to authorizing to put those few pieces out on bid, we should also consider moving forward with the sale of all of these smaller items if our expert is comfortable with what's being offered.
And I think that happens anytime when you're selling an item and you're offering it to two, three people. They're going to come back with a different price. So it's our duty to get the best price for the item. So if we put it out for auction, all parties involved or interested could put a bid in. As long as we understand the base amount that we're not going to go below to accept, then we're fine.
Yeah, like there's this context, like there's a, you know, power washer that's fairly old versus it's like worth 200 bucks versus a scrubber that's a year old that's worth 5,000, $6,000. Does that make sense, Carol?
I hear you. I'm still not comfortable selling off all our equipment before we know how this thing is going to turn out.
I actually do agree with that. Whenever you're taking a service that you provide in-house, and like I've done transportation for years. School districts will outsource transportation and sell off all their buses. Then the bus service will say, okay, we're now going to triple our costs. You need $5 million to go out and buy 10 buses. So you're kind of stuck. So I think if we do this slowly, and which I think we're doing, we're doing it slow. We're not going to sell everything off in 24 hours. We're doing this slowly and see how it goes. But once again, the equipment, if we last five years with GCA, that equipment really won't be worth anything.
Well, no, I would just want a buyback like within a year. I would like to sell everything GCA that the committee is recommending, except those key items, the 90%. I'd like to sell to GCA tomorrow so they can use the equipment that bought, own the equipment they're using. But I'd like a buyback in the contract that if they, if it don't work out in a year, we get to buy it back at a better price. Get all our equipment back. So we're back in production instantly. Never leaves the site. We don't have to shop. We have all our equipment back and say, I want a clause in that contract that we will have everything at a, you know? Whatever, 10%?
Well, if we're going to do it slowly, then we, if we're talking about doing it slowly and piece by piece, now we, I think we should. It would make sense to come up with some type of lease agreement, at least on some of the larger stuff.
I'd rather not do it slowly. I'm saying I'd like to do it fast. Get 90% of it off the books. On the key pieces, yeah, whatever. Three or four pieces that Casey identified as being not acceptable in the bid.
Those items might not be sold all to GCA. When we put it out for bid, anyone could go buy it.
I guess I'm suggesting that they buy it at that price, that 90%. 90% of the items on this list, where our experts are in agreement, are fair price. Pull off the ones that are not agreed upon. Sell them all to GCA as a club.
I think they, you know, what we call the key pieces are ones where we were offered 3,000, but we feel like it's worth six or seven.
I agree. I agree.
So if we sell to them for three.
I'm saying let's not sell those to them. I'm saying the 90% that everyone has agreed is the right price, the good price. 90% I've heard from the committee of the items on this list, they quoted at the right price. Pull off the 10%, sell them off individually, don't sell them all. But get the 90% that we're all in agreement is the right price over to the GCA books and all of our books with a buyback clause if it doesn't work out in a year. What's wrong with that idea?
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think it's a bad idea to even, you know, to say, Mr. Schubers, if you could draw something up like that, for me to draw something up and bring it on sale and see if GCA was agreeable with that. And I agree, I don't think it needs to be five years from now or three years from now. But I think if it happens in a year, it would make sense that we don't have to, well, I would still buy it.
Thank you.
I mean, we're, if we're not going to buy back the back of cleaner, that's where they go. Right?
Why not? If we have it now, why wouldn't we want to be in the same position in a year of GCA if we weren't able to continue?
Just question, we're looking at the high school here of $7,200. So we're going to go to legal counsel to pay them how much per hour to draw up an agreement that we're going to say how much.
I feel I'm not articulating this properly. Do you understand what you're saying? We're saying the whole, sell them the whole lot. Instead of going out to bid with each individual item, the 90% of this list that they have priced themselves and our staff feels is appropriately worth return for the taxpayer's investment, sell them the whole lot with the rates to buy it all back as a lot purchased, with the rate to buy it all back in a year, over 15 months, until we're satisfied with this contract in the as-is condition at that time at a reduced rate and agreed upon discounted rate. So they're going to use it for a year, essentially leasing it from us. And we're going to be back in full production in a year, 15 months, a year, if it doesn't work out. It's one contract, one big lot sale. They're going to buy 90% of this in the board.
I mean, I'll be honest, I don't know that we need Mr. Schubers to write that paragraph. I could probably write that sentence. I mean, it's not really a contract. If it made everybody feel better, I don't know that we have to do a contract or do a joint.
We can do that.
Good suggestion. I guess when we hold back the other items.
I think the only, the only question we can answer is, was it depreciated price by a buyback?
That's the negotiable. Whatever our business manager would recommend and they would agree to.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
That was everything. I had last was other questions and our next meeting date was September 12th. Oh, oh, sorry. That was none of my agenda, but we can talk about it. There was discussion about groups that have been using the schools weekends. And in the past, there's been no charge. And under our policy, if we are expending costs, they are supposed to be paying that. So even, we were having staff come in on the weekends to rebuild, close the building, clean up, those kinds of things. And some of those groups have been charged, mostly the community type groups. And the AC, I think, uses the gym for basketball on the weekends. There may be a couple other issues, but we did say that we need to go back to the policy. The policy was outdated last year to differ, to say, basically state if it's a cost to the district, that that cost needs to be passed along. So we did reiterate that we would be enforcing the policy. And we did say that we should send letters to all the groups that say that, that we will be following the policy in the board and they will repay the hourly fee that would be, I think it's $35 an hour that we're paying for costs and for the sewed deals.
That does weekend, we have to.
As long as it's within times that we have a facility in the building. So it was after hours and we had to pay extra to have somebody there. They would get charged. But if it was during normal hours, then we went out.
I just like that. We put a lot of work into the policies. I'd really like to see them enforced. And I bet we were fair. There was three different tiers of charges. And I know that most groups shouldn't find it punitive in any way to contribute to the cost. I appreciate the policies.
And I will say, we did specifically, we did come up with a resolution on this. But even regarding, for example, Blazers and football, each of the turf, I would have called their games. Now, I mean, back when, when my nephews and my daughters here, they went up to play football, they didn't play on the turf field. I think they played homecoming game on the turf field. It was the biggest exciting thing. We may need to look at that. I mean, there is a cost to the turf and to that use. So I understand that it's our community's children that are using those facilities. But we're also asking taxpayers to pay increased taxes. And those taxes are for education and children. So we may look at that as well. But we didn't make a decision on that specifically.
Thank you, Ms. Frataski. Policy review committee, Mrs. Spies, do you have, you didn't meet?
We did not meet in July, right?
Right, since you met last in June before the vote meeting.
Yes, I think I recorded it on that.
You didn't?
Yes, thank you. So we're meeting again. Policy review, we'll be meeting on August 22nd here at the administration building, 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay. So if this Neil is not here to report out in transportation, you're meeting?
I have to get you the dispositions.
Okay, is there any public comment on any of the committee reports?
I, yes. But she is right. If you look into, you know, sign, Jada's area 501 Main Berth Street. She is absolutely right. It costs districts a lot of money. If this falls through, at the end of it, it costs all districts a lot of money to go back to like what we were, regular school boys. You are right. Yes. And I thought, I did think also, I did think also that they were going to purchase, that they were going to bring in their equipment. That's what I thought. Who's paying for chemicals? Who does that? Are we, you know? The cleaning supplies, like? Is it, they do? Okay. And we had, we had not gotten insurance yet as of, yet. But Mr. Harris was on that. He worked on that today for, I did email, we all have different email addresses. I try to stay good for just to.
With which insurance?
Any insurance right now. It was supposed to be July 1st. We got insurance.
The benefit, like health benefit insurance?
Yes, health insurance, dental, I, we have a.
If you speak with me after the board meeting?
Yeah, I read your email. Yeah. Thank you. That's what I said. If you got it on the red light, thank you. They, well, yeah, we'll talk about it.
You do have insurance.
Okay. Yeah, I'll talk to you.
Just wasn't notified? Just a notification?
She didn't sign up.
Okay, okay.
None of you did.
Okay.
All right. You are right. At the end, it costs districts a lot of money to go back if they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none.
No, no, she's just turned it off.
Thank you.
Okay, next is finance, course approvals. We'll be voting on that in a short time. Presentation by board members. Spies, is there any secretaries of correspondence that you're aware of?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
ECIU report, Mr. Raffke?
Well, we did not meet in July, but I was negligent in my junior report at the last meeting. So as you can see, we've actually done the IU recently, district, so, but you know where that is. But I will report on one thing the IU has done. Our, the assistant director for the IU has left. He did take another job as a superintendent elsewhere. The IU, Dr. Hacken has decided that they're not going to fill that spot. They had decided to increase responsibilities for some of the other directors there. There was an increase in some of the compensation for that, as well as they brought on another administrative assistant. But net, there are savings, savings of quite a bit, top of the head of capital, but it is tens of thousands of dollars that they are saving salary there. So, you know, Dr. Hacken is always looking for ways to kind of streamline things over there. And he costs also, and I was going to think that the IU had just done.
Question for Ms. Raffke? Thank you. I know Perseverance Technology didn't meet in June, so we wouldn't have a report. Mr. Martino isn't here, so we won't get a legislative report. There's no student board representative, so that concludes our reports. Is there any public comment? Seeing none.
I have a quick question on the student board representative. What is that, how will that position be filled then? Let's remind, refresh my memory on the process.
So we have junior, depends who we're moving up.
Right.
Basically, it's occupied.
Right.
And then we'll be offering up to students to make applications first and help the schools. So we probably won't have a student representative, Campbell, open seat by October.
Good. So the brilliance shines through the program because we had one in training the previous year. And I just really applaud that endeavor.
Okay, the next item, personnel will be voting on that a little bit later. Programs, your Michael enrollment, student data report, and we'll be approving minutes. Is there any, any public comment on programs? Seeing none. Move to whole business. Where are we with the board newsletter? Maybe you're, at some point, you're going to interview?
The new board, the newsletter will be done in fall when students come back. We talked about making it committees would submit something. So once school starts again in September, we'll figure something out by, I would say no later than the Thanksgiving holiday. The latest, hopefully by Halloween, but no later than Thanksgiving. It'll be done by, submitted, information will be submitted by the committees. That's what, that's what we talked about, I recall.
For the board newsletter?
Yes. The information will be submitted through committee. So the committee's finance policy.
Okay. Mr. Rattus is here for the paperless agenda update. And we did meet with Mrs. Miller and Scott to talk about the Blazer Foundation promissory. That'll be something we're going to have to continue to bring back and discuss as far as, you know, if it's going to continue to be a finding, which I'm applying in notation, or correct word notation, in our audit. At some point, you know, as a board, I think we need to decide what we're going to do or nothing. It could be anything from absolve the debt to leave it in place and work out some type of payment schedule if that's possible. But it's something that, you know, obviously, the foundation is active. They've done a great job with, let's see, trying world economics and state economics, trying to get some money. So plus it's been sporadic public support, which that's really what we need to get a good public support network behind a foundation like that for it to be successful. So Mrs. Miller is a new position. We're looking forward to hearing great things.
I just ask how the, do we know how vulnerable it, like?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what you're expecting, how expectations you're at.
I honestly didn't know what to expect either, but I do think it went well. We had a consistent amount of attendance and money come in. We made a little bit of money, but we also, one of the ways we had volunteers was to offer them, you know, funding for their organization if they volunteered. So we didn't take a loss, which I think is good for the first year. So hopefully, I only had a few months to plan this. Now I would like to bring it back again next year and I'll have a year to plan. So I'd like it to be twice as big as it was this year's. But I think it was successful.
I'm sorry. Yes, it was. Yes, she said, yes, it was.
I have a question. Does anyone know historically, the three, I think three, the last three years we've gotten contributions from the Blazer Foundation? Do you know what those amounts were? Does anyone have like, was it like eight, nine, and 10 or something? Actually, the contributions to the program?
Are you talking about with like the schools?
Yes. What did you, and what was the gross?
Like a total?
Total scholarships, what do we call them, grants, teacher grants? What was the total benefit the Blazer Foundation has brought to the school district?
Over the past three years?
Three years. Three years.
So do you include the walking trail, nature center with AEC that's coming up?
Yeah, yeah, not the way it was spent, what was given, what was raised and given, because just about everything.
To the district?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, hang on.
Just one more.
If you're not following me to this, especially with Mrs. Weber and Mr. Max not being here?
This is rough figures.
It's made reported.
Because I want to make, I want to make a proposal.
I'm going to say 30,000 for the nature trail, the greenhouse at the middle school, when that finally goes up, that'll be 25,000. Roughly 6,000 the last three years to the individual schools, that's another 18. At least a thousand dollars over the last three years, 3,000 total in scholarships to students who have to write an essay about community service and how they're going to give back after they've graduated. The literacy program at BEC, which is about $5,000. I think they, we purchased another computer system of some sort. I'm going to say in the last three years, it's 70 to 80,000 dollars, if not, a little bit more.
Thank you. So what I'm, I'm suggesting that the board consider absolving the debt of the Blazer Foundation as long as they continue for the next three, four years to bring in, say, 25,000 dollars to the district. Because that money is, they're bringing it in, they're passing it through.
And I do, most of the money that comes in goes right back out, so AEC may.
Exactly. They take a little, very little bit in administrative plus. I would just like to, I would like to absolve the debt, but I'd like to have the caveat that they have to continue the, the good work that they've established maybe five years down the road. We absolve that debt, they continue to bring in.
A debt retirement schedule?
Yep. As long as they bring in X dollars, 20, whatever you want it to be, very realistic for both of them, 20, 25 a year, because we just benefit. I don't want, I would like to get it off the books, and I don't want to hold it over their heads, or the good stuff.
Instead of a time-based retirement of the debt, could we set it up, structure it so that as soon as they contribute an amount of money equal to the amount that we issued them as seed money, at that point, the debt would be gone. So as long as it's a break even for the district, I'm fine.
They all pay for the seed.
If that's, if that's the benchmark, they've already doubled it.
That's all, I just like to incentivize it, and I don't want to set a dollar figure because then it drags on and on. This way, his seed audit in five years out will be gone, as long as they provide another, you know, whatever, 150, 30, 500, 50,000 dollars, 20, say 20, another 125,000 dollars to the district.
Well, at the end of the day, that was, that was the goal, we set that, this foundation, to break the record. They are, they have proven that they're bringing it in.
We see the money they've paid for twice a year. You remember, we were really cautious about, you know, setting this up, because the, it was before it was run so poorly.
Yeah.
Or why, actually, it was not being right at all. So, and all that money at that point.
Yeah, was the seed money well spent before that?
Is all the seed still on the board? Are all the seeds still on the board?
Yeah. We are always looking for more members to join the board. There is not a limit to how many we can have, and of course, with more people involved, more word gets out about what the Blazer Foundation does, so.
I should note, it's completely representative, representation of the district.
Um, Mr.?
Thank you, thank you for the work you've done with the foundation.
It's all.
My gift.
Okay, can I turn it off a few?
Thank you.
Is that good? Okay, pre discussion. Is there any public comment? Aside from very exhausted public comment we just had?
Can I ask?
Sure.
Actually, I just want to go back to programs, because I moved really quickly past programs.
Okay.
I did look at our monthly enrollment data, but I didn't see that it was broken down like, you know, by, I guess I could have done the exercise myself, but have, did we find any issues with the enrollment, like with classes? Or are they still, are we still pretty, it's our class size numbers, I guess, children there. Are class size numbers still a little smaller?
Right, right, right.
Yes, yes.
Because normally, on this, you would have the break, the reverse side would be the breakdown by section.
Not for August. We won't have that until September.
You won't have that, yeah, because I mean, we're not in school yet, so.
Yeah, I just, I know that there's, every summer, sometimes, you get last minute enrollments, and last year, we had issues where in August, we were already over.
No, we are, we are not over. But we're working with Amity and Monocacy particularly, that we're not over. We're close, but we're not over.
Okay, thank you.
We're down like 50 since the last day? Is that, am I reading it right? We were at 34, 36 last, last day of June, last day of June, 34, 36, and I guess end of July was 33, is it?
I actually look at, I actually look at everything by grade in classrooms, so right now, our classrooms are full. So if you're looking at other grades, middle school, high school, right now, my primary concern are the primaries.
If nothing, then we should have a little bit of easing because there's a net of 50 less students than there were in June when we had this discussion, right?
There is, but it's spread throughout the district, so if you're looking at third grade or second grade or fourth grade, they're maybe up, and that's where, that's where we're looking.
Sorry.
No, no, I put the brakes on.
I just had a question about the Blazer Foundation. When can we, like, when are we going to make a decision on this? I feel like we should bring it up. I feel like.
It's, it is something we have to.
I feel like it's, it's de-motivating to the team that's raising money for us each week to bring it up and go, are they going to fence back, are they not going to fence back? Like, I feel like, in my opinion, I think we could vote to absolve it now, if we can make a motion.
Yeah, can I make a motion?
Yes.
We'll do that, the voting.
Mr. Small, what, what would need to be done in the area? Is it a simple, I guess my question is, is it a simple, bringing a motion from the floor to absolve that debt, or what's the process? What, what we're looking at is some options, whether we want to retire the debt over a course of time, or is it one fail smooth?
Well, the motion would have to, to contain what the board's desire is, whether it's total forgiveness immediately, or a structured.
No, I mean, from an accounting standpoint.
Well, from accounting standpoint, we would, something, do the appropriate entry to remove from balance sheet.
Okay. Because nothing has to be filed, nothing has to be submitted.
I'm not sure the nature, without looking at the formal documents, but once the board made a decision to take the action, then we have to follow through it and do the reversing legal resolutions to what was originally them created.
That would effectively amend the original contract, the original agreement, the resolution.
It would eliminate, but they would have to leave it in the document, I would think, much like, you know, you got a board next to your house.
It would just amend it, the party would agree to amend it, the original contract, the last resolution.
But I mean, it doesn't affect the budget, I mean, we're not expecting to have that money or.
No reason at all.
And it's been, obviously, it's been over, more than covered, and we, we're, by charging them, it's just money that's not, we're not getting, so what's the difference?
It's a spam on our audit, it's an edit on our audit, a note on our audit that looks like there's a debt that we're not collecting.
It must be, it all felt like there was a concern about the management of the program going forward, like to me, you just absolve it. That's, that's my opinion.
Sounds like there's will, one way to get on with the word, to get rid of that.
I think we continue to monitor, I mean, that's, they're always.
I, whatever, if we're going to do a schedule, amateur, amateur organization schedule, and we're going to spread it out, maybe no more than three years, so we won't span from one board member over the other, so you always have that continuity of knowledge.
Have to make a motion to the building, or do you want me to bring it to the next week?
I think we can keep it, we'll have it.
I guess, this super doesn't have to grab anything, but I'll verify it. I have to look at what the original documents were.
You're right, and it's, that's why I didn't want to move on it tonight, because I'm not, I'm not sure how we're.
Come wait another month, as long as we get it.
But when we can, you know, if, if we have everything in place, it's something we could certainly bring forward at the voting meeting at the end of the month.
Let's do that.
Because realistically, and I'm not, I'm not saying this as a downer, I'm just saying realistically, if they, they didn't pay us back, and they aren't, they don't have any money in the foundation, say something happens, and they're not raising any money, how do we get the money back anyway?
We cease visiting doors' house.
So, it's kind of, like.
You have a couple of that much part.
I mean, I don't think you can go after them individually personally, so if the foundation has their money, they have their money.
I honestly think there was never any intention of getting it, it was just a carrot and stick thing, you know, how to hold that.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that necessarily, talking.
It was, it was, we were cautious, we were cautious of, because of how the.
It was a good sales pitch.
Yeah.
It forced them to get on their game, though.
Right, because we're missing about $2 million that was promised to the stadium project, and we never saw a 10 cents.
I'm okay with three years.
Right, and if we had that $2 million, we'd have a lot.
What could you commit to?
Okay. Good discussion.
I don't feel comfortable coming with enough, because we have a meeting this week.
If you're going to talk, please come in the microphone.
I was just looking for a number from the foundation, what they thought would be realistic to commit to for the next three years, if I move the motion for three years for giving this schedule. Would 25 be realistic, considering you're averaging about 30 a year?
I don't feel comfortable giving a number out myself with.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right, right.
What we're discussing, we do have a meeting this week, and we can discuss it and come back, maybe with the number to Mr. Small that says what we feel is a reasonable amount to be able to give back each year.
To commit to. And I don't think it should be annual either, I think it should be annualized, three years at an average annual return of like 25, so if they're off one year, you know, some of receipts go in the next year. I'm thinking 20, 25 minimum, you know, keep them on their game, with all due respect. Okay, thanks. I'll wait to hear from your, your recommendation, and I'll bring the motion. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Want to eat a programs or, or, or business? Seeing none, new business, athletic pass presentation, Mr. Smith?
He got him up, though. Last week, Mrs. Spies moved over to visit. Look, she's covered her face. Anyway, after an hour and a half of magic, I slammed my face against the wall. The real lesson is use sunscreen, because that's, that's what happens.
Thank you for clearing my good name.
Hey, excuse me. That happened on vacation when you were sending me pictures of you eating lobster on the beach?
No, this happened 40 years ago, when my mother would mix iodine and baby oil together on the beach.
Okay, I thought you were eating, sending me pictures of you eating lobster on the beach from last week.
Scratch your salt for the lobster.
Thanks for your concern.
I am concerned.
I was wondering if you're going for like lobster wasn't fully cooked, and they got him.
That would serve him right.
It felt like a lobster got me this morning, so.
You could joke about it.
Athletic passes, did anybody get to take a look at it? I mean, I made one, one change, and the only change I made was, where it says all home girls and boys in cross games, I added county, district, and state playoffs as well, they won't be included. So, do you have any questions?
Explain it for the record, for the audience, please. What we're looking at, please.
What we're looking at, selling a year pass verbally right now, or sooner after we do that improvement, and begin the end of season, but it can be bought at any time. But we want to try to push it as fast, as much as we can in the beginning. A family pass, which will include two adults, students 8 through 12, non-schools, a student would be 3, would be $75. All right, a single pass would be 35, student pass 25, 8 through 12. If you're 62 and over, and you live in the district, it would be great. And replacement passes are $10, so. We're hoping, what this is going to accomplish, obviously, we can get more money upfront. My, my main goal, whoever likes a lottery, rock the stop.
No.
Okay. Getting more money upfront, I'll be through these quickly, will promote more people to come out to our sporting events, in fact, I already have them, who wants to sign up for it, right after. Okay. Obviously, more people, buying some concession stand, building a larger fan base with our students and parents is huge, all right, so you've got to get people there. Will help build laser spirit throughout the community, families will now be able to afford to go to events together as a team, all right, which is big for me, and I like to see all families there. Local spirit wear businesses, sales will rise, larger crowds will boost our athletes' to perform at a higher level, which is very evident last year when Mr. McKnight suggested I do a $1 student ticket sale, and it was like, so the game, and it really worked out nice, and a lot of kids came, and I think Mr. Raffke will, will agree that it actually gave us the win against New York in basketball. So, it, it does matter, the kids being there does matter, and a better place to be, but at sporting events, or any events, it's cool. All right, number nine, I have larger crowds will help sell advertisements, and this is for the future, all right? On a future scoreboard equipped with a large video board for local business to advertise on, so this is something that's planting a seed, this is a more taste of the feast to come for you guys, and this is Spies goes all about it. So, more people we have at these events, obviously, we can make more money, more people will see the advertisements, they're eventually beyond the scoreboard, and it's just a good thing. As far as advertising, I talked to Scott, website, Facebook, Net Ed, Week, Peach Jar, Fall Kickoff, which is on Wednesday, which is at 6:30 for everybody, not 5:30, I want to make that correction.
He told me to be there 5:30.
5:30 for the coaches, 6:30 for parents.
He told me to be there 5:30.
Obviously, kickoff, coaches, parents meetings, high school name, edge of the board, we're just going to blast it out as, and get as many people that get on board as possible. I think this will catch on, I think once people see, if it's a great deal, all right, 75 dollars for a higher family, you can't beat that, all right? If you go to five home games, football, you've already paid for it. All right, if you don't like fall sports at all, you can buy in the winter time, and obviously, you'll make, you'll make money on basketball games, or volleyball as well, so. That's about it. Any questions?
Thank you for your hard work on that.
I, I really liked the idea, and I encouraged Mr. Schmidt to bring it to us, and I do believe this came out of a committee too, didn't it? It came out from one of his committees, isn't it a grassroots proposal? So, no, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I thought I heard someone on the committee. You want another one?
All right, I don't know.
No, so this is your idea, pretty much?
Well, it, it's, it's my team.
Okay. Okay, I was just going to promote it, if I knew it had already a lot of support in the community, and I just want to add that it is a little pesty, while I, personally, I want to drive in mine, I want to drop it in and do something, and I don't have the two or four or five dollars, because I'm a credit card kind of person, it actually, I'm actually like, this way, I'm deterred from, from stopping at some events that I might otherwise if I had the year pass. And, you know, a couple minutes here, I won't remember, so I might not want to stay start to finish if I buy one of these passes, and there might be other people that, that follow football or something, I would make an effort to make more of the games if they had the pass all to a minimum, okay, as a place to, I could catch the second half, you know, as, oh, I'm going to spend, whatever, just catch half of the game, but they might with the, the pass in possession, I'd really appreciate you bringing this up.
Thank you.
I have a question. Two, quick ones. One, is, is there any other districts that have done this, do you have one?
Most, most do have.
Is that right?
Yeah. I, I called around, obviously, and I asked the person, if he wants some numbers, liquid, this is a small district that's small ones, and they sell around 700 of these. So, that's 75 dollars, that's 52,000, 52,500 dollars just for the tickets, and that's just the whole people.
One, is there any other districts that have done this?
Most, most do have.
Is that right?
Yeah. I called around, obviously, and I asked first, if he wants some numbers, liquid, this is a small district that's smaller than us, and they sell around $700 of these. So at $75, that's $52,000, $52,500 just for the tickets, and that's just the whole people, that doesn't include visitors.
Right. Nice. I have two questions, you can interrupt.
Okay, I have one pivot, I'd like to add a new business to, as Mr. McKnight interviews our new band director, Matthew Wolf. Just for the record, we are not related.
I like the name, I almost said gear when cheating roll call.
Welcome, Mr. Wolf, hopefully you're gonna vote and have him in there, and he was one of 75, like 75 applicants to replace Mr. Gervin, very competitive field, had outstanding opportunities, we interviewed, and Mr. Wolf certainly distinguished himself, he sent him to Mr. Harris and to Mr. Hurley along with another cabinet, and he distinguished himself there, so we're very fortunate, he comes from Warwick, glad to have him, he's gonna be bringing some other innovative ideas, like have band, have basketball games and things like that, so we're really excited, so.
Let's tell us a little, a little bit about yourself.
Sure, so for those of you, obviously, most of you don't know me in here, I'm a 2011 graduate of the Siah College, my degree is education, as Mr. McKnight said, I've served at Warburg for the past five years as the high school and middle school band director out there. Under my direction there, the bands have won championships in jazz band, we've also covered the top three, three times in marching band, winning special awards from high schools for various other awards, my concerts are perceived superior ratings, and I'm looking to do the exact same thing here, if not more, Daniel Boone, I got to meet the kids, Mr. Harris invited me out Tuesday, Mr. Harris and Mr. Hurley actually asked me in the interview, why Daniel Boone, and I think when I met the kids on Tuesday, and I had that question definitively answered for me. The kids just seemed awesome when I get to meet them, it was only 15 or 20 minutes, but they just seemed outstanding. I can't wait to get out there and start with them at full speed, like band camp tomorrow morning, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to sleep tonight, I'm just gonna be so excited to be out there, and just start teaching, I feel like I'm a kindergarten going to school for the first time almost. But I thank the interviewing panel and everybody for putting some faith in me, putting some trust in me, I think the kids are gonna have a great time, I think we're gonna run some phenomenal concerts at the high school, and I think you all are gonna love the atmosphere at football games on Fridays and also at our basketball games. We will make that stadium be place to be on Friday nights of the fall, and we will make our gymnasium be place to be for our basketball games, because nobody else will come close to the atmosphere whenever the band is in there, the kids are going crazy, and the teams are doing well. So I thank you, if you have any questions, I'm gonna stick around a little bit at the end, hopefully, hopefully we can do some more of you.
I have a couple of questions for you. And it's true, we have a strong music program here, I've been involved with it since 2004 for the high school, finished up my last year last year, so all my kids have graduated and moved on. But, you know, we do have a great, great core of talent here, a lot of good teachers that taught the kids well over the years, and it gets the high school program, and it really shows when we were competitive against much larger schools. So I guess, my question, since you're starting, you know, here we are, beginning of August, how are you doing with the show for, you know, for the coming, you know, large event season? How you, how you, how you prepare for that?
So the students are actually keeping the show that they were given back in the spring, I'm just gonna be coming in and teaching that, tweaking a few things, and also working with the staff that have been with the marching band already in place. So I'm just gonna come in, just kinda guide them along the way, make a few tweaks, design changes to the show if I see fit. I'm certainly used to coming in this late, when I started Warwick, I was hired the week before band camp started, I didn't have a show, so I came in and had to pick out a show and hire a staff and get everything within seven days after band camp started. So I feel pretty confident about what we're gonna be doing, I get to hear the kids a little bit when I have to come out, and I think they're gonna be a fantastic group.
The other question I have is, we have a really good relationship with the Cadets, where they come in, they use our facilities, okay, and our, we've gotten some wonderful equipment from them in exchange for the fees to use the facilities, where they gave us their used equipment, which is, their used equipment looks better than a lot of our new equipment, and I'm just hope, since you're wearing your Cadet shirt, hoping that continues, because that's been a really beneficial arrangement and relationship, and we certainly wanna cultivate and maintain with that.
Yeah, I would absolutely love to continue that, I did drum corps for four years, I know George Hopkins personally, the co-director of the Cadets, I was out here on Friday and Saturday, I came up because I heard that they're gonna be here, I know we have two Daniel Boone students are in the lower group of the Cadets too, so I just wanted to come out and see both of them perform as well. It's a great thing for the kids, the improvement, some of you, if you don't know what drum corps is, it's like if the, well, hopefully I don't make any enemies with this, but the Philadelphia Eagles came out here, decided they wanted to practice for a few days.
He just lost mine.
You got mine. Yeah, but you got mine.
You're very greedy.
You got mine.
Cowboys.
Cowboys, come on.
Yeah, I would absolutely love to see that continue, I fought for five years to try and host it for Warwick, and I know that they, a lot of times will give away some of their used gear, which is in phenomenal condition compared to buying used from other places, and way cheaper than buying new, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars cheaper. So I definitely wanna see that continue if at all possible.
Great. Well, we'll be voting on you shortly, so we'll keep in mind that you're Eagle's family.
All right.
No, I wish you ever success and welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any public presentations on any issues? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Adjourned, all right, we'll move, we'll move right into the voting meeting.
No, you just go right into the [inaudible].
I have one question. So, I guess they get it, I think.
Yes.
I guess I wasn't getting the traction, so.
The title of the term is, it's a recycled EK timer.
You could buy it in Washington. You could buy it if you have to adjourn. Okay, it's two doors again.
At what time you're.
It's gone, it's continuation.
Carol, you ready?
Yes.
No, we don't. Okay, we're going to transition into our vote, special voting meeting. Let's see, under announcements, agenda edits, there are several, does everyone have a copy of you? Okay. Under number five, finance, letter W, add letter W, motion to approve revised amendment to letter of agreement between Daniel Boone area, Daniel Boone area school district and the Delta T group. Add letter X, motion to approve the 2016-17 BDC Elementary School handbook changes attached with 17. The last is letter Y, approve, motion to approve the 2016-2017 list of high school courses with less than 10 students as recommended by the CNI committee. Okay, under six, personnel, motion to approve the following retirements or resignations, under one professional, A, Pam Robbins, life skills teacher, had an elementary school resignation. And under six, personnel approvals pending all paperwork, motion to approve the appointments of extra critical, extra curricular, Jake Snyder, high school assistant football coach at 2943, effective for the 2016-2017 school year, replaces B, Noaker. Volunteers, add A, full clearance is unsupervised, Jessica Sanziger. That concludes the agenda edits. So is there any presentations by the public on agenda items, lovely? Seeing none, I have a motion for five.
I'll make a motion for five, A through Y as amended.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Torgowski, second by Mr. Ratskow.
I guess it was an agenda edit, I was, I wanted to pull out Q and R for individual persons.
Q and R.
I didn't realize that was a whole.
I'm going to amend my motion for A through Y with the exception of Q and R, if Mr. Ratskow.
All right, it's certainly, should all agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a voice call vote, please?
I guess maybe a little small, since Mr. Neil's not here, so, I just have one quick question about the R and P for transportation. It's funny, it seemed, I was being, I was wrong, it seemed those were all, so we want the, we want the goats back, and it seemed a little fast getting them back, was there a reason why you wanted all the goats back and, yeah, and then, was contracts not gonna be awarded until next year?
Just for budgeting purposes? Yes, that's, that's the reason, we, we allow from the submission date before the responses the 13th of September, gives us some review time, and then we have until 24th of October for the board, and that would coincide with our budget preparation calendar for next year.
I have a, I have a question about the security contract, I noticed we pay the guards a little bit more, I think it was $26 for sporting events and $21 during the school day, do I read that right?
We have a contract, yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because there's more likely to be a ruckus, does that speak to how behaved our high school, our students are versus when we open up to the outside or, is that standard?
It's usually nights or weekends.
Oh, okay.
It's after hours.
That is, it's an after hours, okay.
Any other board discussions? Do we have a voice call vote, please, for five A through Z with the exception of Q and R?
Through Z or?
Eight through Y, with the exception of Q and R.
Okay, this is for items five A through Y as amended with the exception of Q and R. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Does both, yeses have it, seven zero. Hearing none, motion yes, seven zero.
Okay, can I get a motion for five Q?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ratskow, second by Mr. Torgowski. Roll call vote, please, if you're ready.
Just a little discussion.
Second time.
You have a hurry. You have a couple of you. You know, Mr. Harris, I'm a big fan, I really appreciate what you've done here in the district, please don't misunderstand this, but when we passed the superintendent scholarship, I do recall you saying that all of your raises would be directed towards that scholarship, and that you personally would not hand yourself more by the district, I was just wondering how you feel about, you know, 35 parent increase that is on the agenda tonight, to go to you and not to the scholarship.
I believe I've made all my comments clear in past board meetings, and I don't have anything else to say.
So can I?
This is, this is an executive, this is an executive session discussion, with the motion tonight is to approve or not to approve.
Okay, but they were public comments that he made in a public meeting, that all of his future raises would go towards the scholarship, so I'm just clarifying, is he gonna donate this back to the school, because that's my vote, I don't see why that's exactly a bit of public comments.
And I stand 100% behind my public comments, there is nothing said in public that I have not said in private.
Which is, you'll be donating them back to the school for the scholarship fund, right?
I said that during the superintendent scholarship fund, I would give up all raises because of that scholarship fund. That's what I said. Now donating requires tax implications and everything else that we discussed privately, that's why we came to the superintendent scholarship fund program that it is, the way it is.
So you're saying you're not asking for this money? You really don't?
I made myself clear at the last board meeting when this was on the agenda, that's what I said and that's what I meant.
Thank you. Okay. So, have a discussion?
No other discussion?
So it's not a roll call?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, it's a roll call vote.
I'm sorry.
I feel like we should table this.
I thought, I thought this was kinda, I thought it was sort of discussed at the last meeting, it was, I don't know, it was table, I, I, yeah, I wanted to, I don't know, I just, I'm confused myself.
I thought based on the comments, that based on those comments, this shouldn't be where it's settled, this is.
Correct. I thought he was going to go in at this time, because we still had outstanding contract.
And with, and with Mr. Smalls, if he had ourselves, Mr. Smalls did not have his review.
Well, it was.
Well, that's.
Technically.
From Mr. Martino.
He picked one comment to Mr. Smalls when he was asked.
Okay, Mr. Ratskow and I were there indeed to.
Okay. Can, can we, can I make a motion to table it until we figure out what we're doing?
I'll say it.
Okay. And again, no, no, it's, it's no reflection of the job that you're doing or that we're not pleased with, I just, I'm confused.
Okay.
And I'd like to know what we're doing totally.
Then we proceed with the votes and table.
Table, correct. Who seconded that?
Uh, Mr. Spikes.
Seven hundred is in. That now just dies, five Q goes to Torgowski and Potts, it's a table. Can we vote, this will be a roll call vote? This will be a roll call vote for five Q to table, Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ratskow?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Torgowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Spikes, yes, Mr. Kirks?
Connor.
I lost.
Yes.
Nine one.
Voice, that's almost a six, zero, count second.
I don't have my phone, but Connor was trying.
Connor, I'm putting it back on speaker, okay, he's back.
Connor, are you there?
He's not, no, he's, they're voting, my brain, I have to say yes or no, everybody else, so. You're on speaker.
Yes.
Motion to table five Q, you're running yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, seven zero.
Okay, looking for a motion for five R.
I'll make it.
Second.
First by Ms. Torgowski, second by Mr. Potts, discussion. Roll call vote, please, Mrs. Spikes.
Roll call. This is a roll call vote for I, um. Five R. Five R. So Mr. Ratskow has. No, no. Right here. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ratskow?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Torgowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Spikes, no. Mr. Kirks?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
I, I need a reason.
What's your reason for the extension?
I didn't, I was not here for the discussion.
Start with Mr. Potts. No, no.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Ratske?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Trawowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Spites, no. Mr. Kurz?
At stake.
At stake?
Yes.
I, I need a reason.
What's your reason for the extension?
I didn't, I was not here for the discussion. I just for establishment.
There was no discussion.
There was no discussion for?
Five R.
For five R?
What was five R?
That's Mr. Smalls salary increase.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Your vote is yes?
Yes.
Not at stake. And Mr. Wolf?
Yes. Sorry.
I just want to clarify, I don't think this is the time to be giving out so many liberative administrative bonuses.
Okay, moving on to six personnel approvals. Looking for motion for the items listed there as amended.
I'll make a motion for six, A through D as amended.
Second. First by Mr. Trawowski, second by Mr. Ratske. Discussion.
I'm sorry, did you say C or D?
D. C as in data.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Mrs. Spites.
Through D.
Through D.
Discussion?
There's no discussion.
Okay, this will.
Could we have a voice vote, please?
This is for item six A through D as amended. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed? Hearing none, the vote, motion passes, seven zero.
Okay, next, are there any presentations by the public on any issues? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? First by Mr. Ratske, second by Mr. Ratske. Call it, okay.